Well, I'm going to do my best to channel John's energy and stay calm and cool and positive and push the ship forward. So we'll begin with the Now I'll ask that we call the rule.
President.
Yes.
Secretary Tom. Treasurer Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Don.
Here, remote.
Trustee Gaten.
Here, also remote.
Zimmerman.
President.
And trustee error.
Here.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask for a motion for remote participation. To allow trustee Don to attend. Whilst just attending.
Right.
And trustee, I think.
So. Second.
Second, please. That's seconds and we'll move on. More on that.
Trustee Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Don.
Yes.
And president.
Yes.
And trustee error.
Yes.
And next down the agenda is reading the oath of office of trustee. So I don't have the text up there. Okay, thank you.
Just please raise your hand. Do we noted? I, Lloyd Eberard, do solemnly affirm that we will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee as a member of the board of trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the Illinois compiled statutes, any applicable rules or policies of the county of McHenry, and the policies and bylaws governing McHenry County Conservation District to the best of my ability.
Thanks. It's a bad one.
Thank you.
Next, any public comments? Do we have members of the public on there?
There is no, no one.
Okay. But moving on to six point one, review of the regular meeting agenda items for next week. Some of those items are going to be subsequently discussed, six two, six three, and so forth, so. Perhaps we'll wait until we finish those discussions and then decide if anyone wants to pull anything or has any further. So let's go to six point two, the climus building, condition analysis, conversion study discussion. I think John is going to lead that.
Yes, thank you, trustee Cook. Elizabeth, you want to pull up that first pick? Thank you. One of the, we've got a couple new trustees in the mix here. This is a project that has been going on for about a year and a half now, and so why don't you bring those two individuals up to speed as well as provide additional information to all of trustees. As staff, we see this stuff all the time, and so there it's part and parcel to what we're doing. And as trustees, when four or five, six months go by between the last time we really had a chance to talk with you about it, sometimes things get, you know, forgot. I want to bring you guys through kind of the process we are, where we are with this. This project really is a step in a building demo project that we embarked on a year and a half ago. So that's where I want to take things at this point in time, what I want to do is get you all oriented to, you know, the area that we're talking about. What you see there is Glacial Park, and Elizabeth, I don't know if you can follow the cursor or can move around. The first thing I want to point to is Harts Road and 31 on the right side of the, a little bit right of that. There you go, right there. Harts and 31, that's, as you're coming into Glacial Park, Harts Road is the main entrance that comes into Glacial Park. You're, if you're coming from the north, which is the Richmond area, you're taking a right to go. And if you're coming from the south, which is Ringwood, you'd be taking a left. Most people go on over and are most familiar with Lost Valley Visitor Center. So as you go in, kind of circle that area there. So yeah, that's Lost Valley Visitor Center there in the parking lot of Lost Valley. Now, once you, Elizabeth, if you go directly north of that to that building complex that's in the valley floor right there, we're going to spend most of our time talking about that set of buildings right there. There's a couple of those that are due to come down. That's part of the demo project, and so we'll be spending some time on that. The other area I want to orient you, Elizabeth, if you could go back out to Harts Road and 31, where the intersection of the Climis or where the Climis Building actually is, right in that area, yes. That's the area, the subject of the, of the study that we're proposing is right in that vicinity right there. So that gives you a pretty quick overview of where things are and where they lay. So if you could go then to the next slide, Elizabeth, please. Thank you. This is actually those four buildings that really is the subject of the, most of the discussion here. I, some trustees had sent in some questions. I've tried to wrap those into the, the discussion here. So, but if at the end of it, I haven't actually hit on every particular item that, that was asked about, please ask at that point, and I will revisit the notes and make sure I get those questions answered. The first building I want to direct your attention to is the L-shaped building called Region One Shop. It has a dark roof, L-shaped building there. The Region One Shop is where our parks maintenance staff work out of for Region One. Region One, in essence, is the northeast part of McHenry County. It encompasses Glacial Park, Harrison Benwell, Elizabeth Lake, Prairie Trail North, all the launches on the Nippersink River or stream. The trails, Prairie Trail North and Hebron Trail. I'm sure I'm missing one or two sites. Oh, North Branch Preserve. I'm sure I'm missing a couple, but you get the justice in northeast part of the county. That's the, they do the, would be doing the grounds maintenance and, and also, you know, some light construction and things like that would, would operate out of this shop facility. There are two individuals that are stationed out of that one, plus their seasonal staff as well. The kinds of things they're going to have in there. Part of that structure is cold storage. Part of it is actually heated shop space. They're, they're going to have their plow trucks. They're going to have their tractors, mowers, the supplies they would need for, for grounds and, and light construction maintenance. That's real typical of what the kinds of things that would be in a shop like that. That, that L-shaped building is about 10,500 square feet or thereabouts. The next building I want to direct your attention to is what's called the football building is directly right of that. And you can note that it actually has a shared wall space there. That's the silver topped building there that you see. That one is rather large. It's 14,400 square feet. And to, to identify what its use was, I say was, because that's a past tense for us. It was about a quarter of it was utilized for, I'm going to say the word seldom used items. You know, they, they, they weren't used every day, so therefore they were stored in there. Maybe a piece of equipment that's used a couple of times a year or something like that would have been stored in a building like that. I know education department used it for storing kayaks, canoes, and things that they would have used for programming like that. Again, under roof and, and kind of out of the way. The next building I want to direct your attention to is, can you go to the west there a little bit to the intern house, Elizabeth? Thank you. That's the intern house, the former intern house a few years ago, due to it needing some significant upgrades and improvements and a lack of heavy use in that facility. We decided to put that on the to be demoed disc or the demolition list. So that, that is what that facility is, and it is actually a part of this conversation because that's one of the buildings that, along with the football building, that is scheduled to be demolished. The last building in the complex is just north of there. It's called the White Barn. That, for lack of a better word, is main use or only use is habitat. There's a bat colony in there. There's a bird colony in there, and so therefore it is, it is basically habitat. It's, it's, you know, a structural habitat. So those are the four buildings that are in that complex there and, and predominantly the subject of this conversation. I want to take everybody back to what prompted this initiative or this project, and that was in 2001. In, I believe it was late February or early March, we had significant snow loading, some heavy snowfalls that damaged the roof of the football building. It didn't collapse it, but it did damage it to a point where we brought, we moved, you know, the items out of there, and we brought a structural engineer to take a look at it. That structural engineer determined that it's not, it's not falling down tomorrow kind of thing. But it, it is something that we probably shouldn't be using anymore, either until it's repaired or demolished. At that time, the board and through, through consultation with, with its insurance company, Prudermia, decided that we'd probably be better off just to demolish that building. So that became the focus of a demolition project, and over the next few weeks or months, it was decided that we should make it a little bit larger demolition project and to add in the intern house, as I mentioned before, and a facility that, a former facility called the Research Field Station that sits in the center of Glacial Park, a little bit south of here and not on this map, that is, has been abandoned for a while and approximately 10 years. And, and is starting to become an attractive nuisance. And so therefore it was decided to wrap that into basically a three-building demo project. So in this process of beginning to plan this demolition project, there were, there were lots of, lots of unknowns. There were some knowns and some guesses. One of those, many staff knew that there were complications with the utilities in this north, in this, this complex here. Water line, the wells on, on, over by the intern house, and it feeds lines that go, you know, throughout the, the complex there. Comes across there. We know that we have power coming from two different sides, we, sides. We have a, on the very eastern side of this is a fueling station that needs power. We have our propane on the north side of the, of the shop or the football building. We have a shared wall between a building that's scheduled for demolition and a, and an active shop facility. And we have tied together, tied together septic systems. And the septic leach field is actually to the south of the road there on the east side. So there's a couple of different septic tanks. So it's, it's as, as the planning department, along working with operations, began to peel back the layers of this onion, we realized how complicated it is, it is indeed there, a very complicated system there. And, and ma- making it somewhat complex. So in addition to that, in this process, we began to understand the magnitude of some repairs that need to be done to the Region One Shop. There is a roof that needs to be replaced. We need siding replacement on it. These are all things that have been, that were identified years ago that basically, you know, we kind of said, okay, eventually we're going to have to do this. Eventually we're going to have to do, to do this. Well, that has actually arrived. We are to a point now where we need to be doing, you know, the roof replacement, and we need to be doing the, you know, the envelope ceiling of these things as well as some utility upgrades just to, you know, bring it into compliance and also make it a usable facility. So we know that to be in the neighborhood of about $200,000 sometime in the next five years, one to five years, we need to be putting that kind of money to the structure if we're going to have a viable facility. In addition to that, through the process, again, peeling back the layers of this onion, we realized that we need to do some future improvements to there in the next six to 10 years, again, to the tune of about $200,000 or an additional $200,000 to make it a usable, efficient facility, you know, et cetera. So with that said, it, it gave us a pause. Staff took a pause going, okay, we have some complications here. We know that we're going to have to invest some money into this facility to, to make it, you know, remain viable. In addition to that, I will share certainly with, I know some of the trustees have heard this before, but there has been a long standard desire to remove this function from the valley floor, from this area, remove it and get it out of there. It's in the flood plain. It's on unsuitable soils. You know, it, it, there are other issues related to, you know, potential flooding, et cetera. So it's and, and view shed. It is in the direct view of Lost Valley Visitor Center as you look out across the valley. So with that said, again, you, it doubles the pause to say, okay, you know, you start asking the questions, you know, do we, since we know we're going to be facing those kinds of, those costs, do we invest or do we divest? You know, do we invest in this, this facility or do we, do we go out and look elsewhere? You know, what other options do we have? We started asking our questions. What options do we have? What would it cost if we were to find something that we had out there that might work for it, that might be similar size in scope to this? And what would that cost if we were going to renovate it? And then the last part of this, how would that compare to something if we were to build new, you know, to replace this function somewhere else? You know, all of those things, this agency doesn't have people on staff to be able to come up with those things, to really dive into that and give realistic estimates. And we can give some guesses and things like that, but you know, there, 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 there are more guesses than they are realistic. So this brings us to February, this past February, where we came back to the board of trustees having unpeeled all of these things, and now we realize this is, this is the magnitude of what we're facing. So in that discussion, we had two main recommendations, and that recommendations, first of all, was to proceed with the demolition of those three buildings we've already talked about. The football building, it became urgent because of, of the, the condition of it. We wanted to add into that the intern house just to, because it's right there, and we may as well take that one down as well. And of course, the research field station was becoming an attractive nuisance and being, you know, being, experiencing some vandalism and things like that. So that kind of rose to the top as well. So that was the recommendation, and the board said, yep, go do it. And we're in the process of finalizing those plans. I believe we're going, we plan on going to bed here very soon and having this as a fall, winter and finishing up in the spring project. I believe that's our timeframe on it anyway. The, and the second part of that February discussion was the recommendation to go out and seek a proposal from a professional company that could come in and do a couple of things for us. One is to take a look at the Climis facility, the horse arena and former horse arena, and to to make an assessment of how viable that would be as a, as a shop facility. That's the first thing. The second thing is what would it cost if we were to renovate that structure, okay, to a shop facility? The, one of the things that was somewhat interesting about it was that its square footage is almost exactly the same square footage as the Region One Shop combined with the cold storage that was used in the football building. So it's almost, you know, square foot per square foot equal. So we're like, okay, well, that's, that's an option for us to consider. So we want to know what that would cost. So that was, that was one of the questions that, that we wanted answered. And the second thing we wanted answered is what would that cost if we were to take and make the same facility, build a new facility of the same square footage, the same function? What would that cost and be able then to compare those two? Okay, that was really the goal of that study is to, is to assess the building. Tell us what, if it, first of all, is viable. Secondly, what would it cost to renovate? And third, what would it cost if we were to, to build new a similar structure new? So that was really what we were asking for. That's what the proposal, as it sits in front of you, would give us. And what that, that again helps us do is it gives us information so we can now compare those costs to what we know we're facing with this Region One Shop cost, the, the repairs and replacements that we know need to be happening in the next one to 10 years at this facility. So since that time, since February, okay, so that's where we are, and that's what's in front of the board tonight, that's this proposal, okay? A proposal from an architecture firm to come in and do those things as I've illustrated. So that's where we are. Okay, now, since February, a couple of questions have come up, one of which is, is that area by the Climis facility, the Climis Barn, is that the, a good location for a shop facility? There are many, many things that would go into determining whether that is a good location or not. From, from, from a purely operational perspective, it does make sense. It would, it certainly would be one of the, the candidates or top candidates to consider, okay? That's, but that's only from an operational perspective. There would be many perspectives that would have to come in and to, to look at that. Of which the most, in my opinion, the most important is what will it cost to renovate or to build new? We don't know that because if it's exorbitantly high, we know we have limited resources, it would probably not be something we would could be able to consider doing financially. So that is just one piece of the puzzle. We're trying to get put in here through that, through that study. So, so that, that is, is one part of that equation. The second thing that has come up, and I will share with a couple of the trustees probably don't know this, some of you may know this. There is another shop facility that is on the west side of the park there. And it is actually operated by the Land Preservation and Natural Resources Division. They do, that's their north shop. They have a north shop and a south shop. This is their north shop, and they operate their management of the north region out of that. And, and that is about between 6,000 and 6,500. We didn't have a chance to field check it in the last few days. I've seen two different figures on it, so I'm just going it somewhere in between that. So would it make sense, is it more efficient to combine the two uses, both the park use that's in Region One here, the Region One Shop, and the north shop of the, of the natural resources folks? Again, I don't have that answer. You know, yeah. So, so we're, we're in a situation, but the, the one thing that will come from this study is that we will get a, if we're asking for a, what would it cost to build a new facility? We're going to get a per square foot approach to it. That's what they're going to give us. They're going to say it's 14,600 square feet to renovate. Here's what it would cost to build a new 14,600 square foot facility, shop. So we should be able to, once we have that data, extrapolate and create a, okay, if we were going to combine these two, what, what does natural resources need? I'm assuming that the 6,500 or the 6,000 to 6,500 is probably undersized for them. That's just a guess I have, and it's a complete guess. But what would it cost? We could take that square footage and magnify it out or add it, you know, do a simple mathematic equation to come up of what it would cost to combine the two. So the, 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 what I'm hoping for is that we proceed with the study so that we get this information and then can start making the next step discussions and the next step decisions on, on how to address this. You know, this, this, the one thing that is paramount is that we do have to do something to the Region One Shop. It shares a wall with a building that's coming down. It has a lattice work of, of, for lack of a better word, inferior utility down there. So we were going to have to do something there, and this study gives us an option to consider not doing it down there, but actually doing it somewhere else. With that, I will turn it to, back to trustee Cook to facilitate the discussion and any questions that people might have.
Thanks, John. That's great. Just one question pops into my mind from the get-go. When the football building is taken down, do you have assurance that that common wall can be preserved so that in the near term, you'll be able to use the Region One Shop? Until these other issues are sorted out?
Yes, Elizabeth, can you go to the next slide? Little tough to see here, but in, in, in rebuilding the onion, so to speak, putting the layers back together, planning is, has worked out, this is the arrangement. And that is that we can, they, they found a way to minimize the impacts as well as shore up the utilities. It's, it's not a long-term approach. It is a short-term approach. While we make these other, get these other studies done and these other, make these other decisions on that, but it will be able to function in the capacity it's currently functioning at. And at least for the time being. Amy, do you have any other comments relative to that? That, that might help answer trustee Cook's questions?
Sure, I can give a little bit more detail, and it's not that we'll preserve the wall. It will come down and we'll build a new exterior wall for the Region One shop. So that, that wall also has asbestos. So it, that, that cost, though, to do, to do that was included in that original demo cost.
Thank you. All right, let me just go around the room if I may, and I'll start with our new trustee to see if Lloyd has any questions.
Well, I, I do have a question. It might be a goofy one, but I want to ask it nonetheless. You mentioned there's a habitat for bats in the, in the barn. Will we do anything to move them or to save them if the barn, when the barn is demolished?
Yeah, I think that right now. That barn is staying.
Staying. I thought it was, I thought it was one of the ones that was going to be demolished.
No, it's not for this project.
Yeah, it was a great question and
Yes, that barn is indeed staying there. And I, I believe, you know, it has been bounced around the idea of how do we preserve the bat colony? How do we preserve the, the habitat for the birds there? But I, I, I will also assure you that, that barn has a steel roof on it. It's going to be there a long time. We have years to make that decision.
All right, I'm sorry. There's some interesting options to pursue in terms of the project, though I don't believe you see the data to be able to.
Well, that, Charlotte, some of your questions.
I, I get, we talked about this before for the new people. And we talked about maybe just shutting that one down. This one, you know, yeah, and just consolidating and using that other one. The north one, I guess, or what is this?
The Climis building.
Well, no, there's two, there's a north and a south shop.
Well, right, we have, I'm going to try to put it this way. There's sort of a turf issue here. You have you have land and preservation with the shop on Keystone. It's about 6,500 square feet. And you have the Region One Shop that belongs to operation and planning, which is 10,000 plus a little cold storage. that belongs to operation and planning, which is ten thousand plus a little cold storage. So, um from my perspective, just to uh editorialize, the idea of two shops a mile apart, this is an opportunity to consolidate. Seems to me eventually there would be some cost savings because you wouldn't have two separate utilities and
Obviously, tools, same.
Right, but but yeah, obviously, the sixty five hundred square foot bill is so they can't absorb the the work that's being done. And so there's a
Bill, if I could add that
Sure.
The two shops evolved out of the acquisitions like
Yes.
Park over time, so uh, yeah, they, right now, the two shops couldn't couldn't absorb one another unless the building was larger.
But you all are friends and you could work out the administrative details. And from the point of view of the district, there could be some this might be an opportunity to consolidate two shops. And again, editorializing, and I'm not used to being in this position. I wanna be sensitive to everyone. But Keystone, there's some pretty views off Keystone, but it uh that to me seems like a better location from the aesthetic point of view than having um the the shops right on Hertz Road at Hertz and thirty one. Just because of the type of vehicular traffic in and out and so forth, so uh, I'm I'm finished. Any any um?
I I still got another one.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that the the two, if we combine the two, there's not enough room for cold storage or there's not enough room for actual, okay, actual guys working on stuff?
So the square footage is in cumulative of what exists and
Well, yeah.
Is not enough to merge, so
Yeah, but I'm, I guess my question is, right? Eighty by eighty, that's sixty four hundred square feet. That's a pretty good sized building for mechanical work. So are you saying that combined the two, you don't have, you don't have enough room for actual mechanics in there working or you don't have enough room to put all the equipment in at store?
So John, if you put in Ed, I guess we'll go both of you to describe the functions that occur in our current shops, both the Ranger one shop and the Agrivo shop, because I think that might help clarify. Because we do have another mechanic's bay that does work up here in Harvard where our trucks and other resources. But they can speak specifically how they work their day to day operations, what's stored there, what activities take place in those buildings. John, I'll start with you.
Okay, uh, Perry, if you're on, I'll let you uh let you handle that question.
Yes, I'm here. Bear with me for a second. Thank you. Um, yeah, so for the region one ranger shop, um, what is uh stored in the uh heated area? Um, would be materials, um, the ranger's office, of course. Uh, the trucks, there's a one ton dump truck, there's two to three pickup trucks uh based on uh the demand for seasonals uh for them to use. Cold storage, and of course, we have lumber, tractors, uh, two to three tractors, UTVs, um, other pieces of smaller equipment. So uh, what the Rangers did, uh, actually, some of the equipment that they had stored in the football building, they were able to reorganize existing cold storage of the region one shop. And uh, we were able to contain all that of the Parks and Fleet equipment in region one in that cold storage as well as that shop. Um, but again, if if you took a firsthand look at it, um, it's both both shops are pretty full with equipment, building materials, um, amenities as well as office space. So uh, that's pretty much a summary of what's at the region one shop.
And your Rangers, they start there. That's where their workday starts. They get their equipment and then they head out to that region to do their work. So they're not there in the shop unless there's a function, correct? But they're working on things there.
Yes, Elizabeth, you're correct. So uh again, you know, summertime, region one being one of the largest regions of, well, actually, it is the largest region that Parks and Fleet maintain. Uh, John had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the number of parks uh that are within region one. Uh, so region one has a huge workload, including, you know, two regional trails. And so therefore, there's quite a bit of equipment that's stored there to maintain the regional trails as well as the parks. Uh, so yes, they do start there. Uh, first thing in the morning, they get a, they send out their seasonal staff, the ranger, assistant ranger go out, they do their duties. Uh, of course, unless there's inclement weather, if it's raining out or during a snowstorm, then they'll be doing work inside the shop. Um, whatever that may be uh to prep for uh for their site maintenance in the future.
Were to combine the two, is there any thought of expanding that building rather than building? Is it, I I don't know what's around that other shop. Is that possible?
That's what I have to ask. And is there, is that amenable to?
I can add too, Ed, with some of the utility, which is where this all started. So let me know, Ed, when you're ready.
Sure, I'm I'm at some point I'm gonna turn this over to Brad because this group works out of the north shop. Well, first of all, by saying both shops are subject to flooding. The Agrivo shop, which is what we call a lot of Keystone Road because we're owned by the Agrivo operation, and the region one shop are both located in heavy floodplain areas. Um, there have been times when we've been unable to get into both shops due to flooding. Uh, so you're contending with some of the worst soils that we have in both areas. And I will, and and Amy, as long as we're on it, before you get over to Brad, you want to talk about utilities?
I do. I think it would just help. Um, because John was very kind about um the um situation that's there. And so just real quick, all of the utilities for the shop run through in the basement of the research fields or of the um intern house there um as well as they come from the football building. So a a again, it's all of them, you know, electric, it is, it is, um, you start to demo the intern house and those utilities, not only are they thirty five plus years old, but yeah, they're in these places that you just wouldn't build or or you wouldn't build off of, right? So that's why where the cost started getting, while we can do the temporary fixes, we'll just, we'll cut the lines, we'll leave the existing um old infrastructure there. Um, but to keep the shop up and running, well, like I said, we did the the bare minimum. But um, you wouldn't want to use that as your base structure to then build off of. So to answer your question of is that a good location to just continue to make bigger um of region one, you you wouldn't um again, because of just the infrastructure that's that's currently there, you'd want to start off from scratch anyway. And we're gonna need to because it's just that old.
The climate though is the study that is going, that's proposed to look at its existing condition and or between that to new was based on the square footage of region one. One other thought, and this would be up for the board discussion, if there was an expanded scope, which is a change from where we started to include a consolidation of sorts, what would that footprint, could you later cost, again, costing an item, do we have the resources to do it and when? Is that something that could be added on to? And so I don't know if that, you know, again, we've got a lot of different things moving. And so how do we identify what comes first or how do you, if if we were to look at that? Right. But the but the, and then again, back to Billy, your question, location?
Right, well, okay, um, I wondered if Chris Dom wanted to jump in from his remote location.
Uh, yeah, Bill, thank you. Um, listening to this discussion, you know, we've had before and then now again, um, I guess I I've looked at some of the buildings and I I think that they're obsolete and as Amy pointed out, you can't build off of anything. I I think we really just need to go with a plan uh of consolidation like McDot has one facility possibly for the whole county. The county isn't that big. Um, and possibility of just building, you know, the needs of everybody's into one, one area. Um, trying to mix and match some of this stuff and and the buildings that I've seen, they aren't worth the doing anything to. So that's just my opinion at this point.
I think that's worth something, your opinion. Um, so I think the floodplain issue would trump uh the uh consideration of trying to get the facility to an area where there's less traffic. So if if the Keystone site is prone to flooding and it's not accessible, we certainly don't want to put two shops there and, you know, and sort of compromise ourselves. So if the claimest site is high and dry, um, then that may be the site unless you have a third alternative. And I personally will be towards a intermediate term goal, a long term goal to consolidate the shops of operations and planning with land preservation. Uh, because that just seems to to make sense. And if we have an opportunity to to sort of start from scratch, we you know, we try to be cost effective. It probably doesn't require adding six thousand feet to fourteen thousand feet and getting to twenty, you know, you might and and this is where I, you know, I'm just um blowing smoke. I don't have a really informed opinion. But you you reprocess old buildings and you're you're using them. If you were gonna start with a new building and you knew what you wanted to do in it, you would probably have a more efficient layout and uh you might you might get more out of it. And the issue of storage space, well, that's, you know, unheated storage space is pretty simple to think of, but then your heated workspace and something with a concrete floor and so forth. I mean, uh, it seems like um you know, one team could you, you know, be using it at one time of the day or time of the year. And in other words, both teams could use the same space because both operations don't require shop work twenty four seven, you know, so there might be some sense of scheduling that, you know, could maximize the use of this space. So I'm um
I just had a clarification and and thank you, Bill. And trustee Dom, uh, based on your comments and the thought of consolidation, and I just want to make sure I interpret your comments appropriately. If you're looking to McDot, are you stating, because we do have various region shops throughout the county, both for our sites and fleet, our parks and fleet now, and our natural resources team, each with different functions and how we operate it? Are you suggesting a consolidation district wide? Or just specifically the Glacial Park vicinity area?
Um, good question. Uh, I'm actually suggesting to revamp the whole thing and yes, go countywide and really try to uh uh think this through and get it in the right location. And uh, as Bill suggested, uh, build a building that would take care of everybody's needs, one way or the other.
And so that, again, district wide, if that was the direction or that was, then I don't know that Glacial Park is the location because it's not centrally located, but that's just my thoughts. But that I would look to planners and things. And so again, consensus, it's resource dollars. How would we do that? A lot more thought would have to go in. And so back to how this was on an issue to take the football building down. So short term, medium, you know, long term, kind of what the vision is. But thank you. I just wanted to clarify because that's what I thought I I heard you.
All right, well, okay, um, I think we should try to move through our agenda this evening.
I haven't had the floor yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the white barn, I don't, what's the purpose of the white barn?
I think that's the bad part.
Yes, that's that's the barn that has uh the bat colony in it and the uh and also a a lot of birds nest in that. So it's just uh
Bats. It 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 holds a large, well, a reduced bat colony. This is the first year the numbers have come up again due to the lichen syndrome. But it also houses several thousand swallows.
Oh, okay. So its purpose is for birds.
Well, it didn't start out that way, but it sure was
They moved in, they moved in, okay, and so
I clarify, I didn't know what and that's, that's what it's turned into. But what's I
It has no function. It has no function for the district except the habitat because they moved in. And so because of the concern over the species decline
Okay.
and abilities to either relocate or find a way to do that safely and resource wise with what was standing.
What's the age of that building?
About nineteen hundred. That that whole area in the center of the park was once a very large cattle operation, northern compound. So we're looking at the remains of what's left. We probably removed twenty buildings down there.
So it pretty much has no value? Right?
Other than the birds.
Other than the birds and the bats.
Okay. Um, and that that's gonna be demolished as well? It's not. So any reason why it's not, it's not valuable?
This is housing colonies of that, you know, the declining, at least habitat.
Okay.
So we have to work through a plan if it's all possible. We've talked about it. How how could you relocate them to a place, but because we're kind of moving on our conservation goals and it's not costing us any money on the landscape because we're not, you know, it's not doesn't have the electrical, it doesn't, it just sits as a structure.
And what if the structure falls into disrepair or repairing it or? So that's my question is like if it's seems that a decision needs to be made on that, right? Ensuring it would be costly to repair a building for for the birds and the bats that are inside.
It is not our intention to maintain a structure.
Right.
But as long as uh we're not paying any investments into it and it's standing, then it is doing a dual function of conservation and then it'll naturally find some point in time in the future.
Okay.
I think you said there was, you probably projected another ten years of life on I just thought it maybe worth, am I even trying to relocate what's there to remove the building?
Ideally in the view shed, yes, it's it's
No, future cost on it because you're gonna have a cost. Um, and then the region shop, would that be finally removed if they knew or repaired that Thomas building was made into functional? Is that eventually gonna be then removed?
That was the conversation. So if you know the football building because of the roof needs to come down.
Right, I know that.
And because it's connected, we saw this as an opportunity and with the utility, how it's all constructed. Um, yes, if we were to find a new home to move the region shop, that's why we're looking at the climate, that's why we started it. If we knew that there, then the demolition could appear to take that region one shop down with the football building.
I just didn't know if you still saw it as a viable building or consolidations?
It would take those off and relocate.
Um, and then the research field center, is that, that would be demolished?
That's in the, that that's not down here on the valley floor. It's further. It used to be the administrative headquarters. So um, that building is also envisioned to be torn down. It has no use any longer.
Right, okay, okay. Um, is that, that's not the same as a natural resource? You mentioned a natural resource.
So the Agrivo shop.
That's the natural resource.
On the Keystone.
The research field station uh was originally a home, then the district administrative offices for about fifteen or twenty years. And then then it housed the research program, well, along with the interhouse. And that program has been shut down for probably eight years.
Okay.
It moved into Lost Valley, there's a seven thousand.
Right, so pretty much the goal would be to get rid of all those buildings. The one, that would be the
So the intern house is no longer a use. Um, the football building needs to come down of the structural integrity. The ranger, the ranger one shop, because of all the utilities that are there, it's an, either we fix it and because we have future investments, which is not the long term goal, because we'd like to have that view shed and take those buildings out of the valley floor. Or um, so that would be the ultimate goal. And at some point, that back farm will likely come down too. And then consolidate. The Agrivo and that, I think, I think we can all agree as a staff that a consolidation or working together to find efficiencies in something that's new and functioning is the right decision. It's it's how we do it, right? How we do it cost effectively? What timing is that? So we've got, and again, we have structures at the front of the park. The Climas campus, again, has an existing um, shop, not a shop, it's a, it's a structure. We use it for our hunting qualifications for archery. And then there's some old home and a couple of other structures down there too, that eventually will need to come down as well. So. Quite a few.
There's also license.
To use that Climas building.
It might be helpful, the visual of, here's the graphics with an X on the buildings that were proposed to be found. And then kind of a, here's phase one, here's phase two, here's phase three. And then if there's a decision or, you know, if there's any decision point, just kind of a why to say, that for one option two, and then the cost behind each one. That would be a really good visual, where they capture it, to do the costs associated with each.
Okay.
Thanks. Oh, thanks for, um, so, um. You know, it seems to me that we have um sort of short term issues and then potentially intermediate and long term issues. I think um one of the questions before us uh is whether to get this engineering study. Yeah. So does anyone have an idea of how much that study would be? Repurpose the Climas building or to build a similar sized building from scratch?
Seventeen six, seventeen thousand six hundred to do just the square footage, not to expand the scope to improve.
Right. But so that's to, okay, to answer that question, it's something else. Trustee Dom has raised the issue of a whole different type of consolidation. One that I'm not sure the staff is immediately ready to address. You've got four regions and sting shops and the heavy duty mechanical shop in Harvard. So it seems to me you'd have to do some brainstorming to analyze the prospect of a central location for all the shop work.
Yeah, we would, we would, we could do some internal thoughts, but then you would hire a different consultant, an architectural firm, to work through that process to look at, you know, what are the functions needs and how that would look. So that would be an additional expense without a plan. Architectural design, it would just take you through a planning phase.
All right. So I'm thinking out loud here. If you're gonna have to get a a plan for a countywide consolidation, that's probably going to be more than seventy thousand dollars. And if you went in that direction, you wouldn't need the seventy thousand dollar plan. On a practical, from a practical point of view, the football building is coming down and you need the region one shop until you have an alternative. So, um, I personally would table the issue of the Climas architectural study. Let the staff internally and then perhaps with uh, input from interest of board of trustee members like Chris Dom or Sean or whomever. Look at that bigger question of consolidation and say, well, yeah, that has real advantages or no, there are just all types of practical reasons why that wouldn't work. Then you either go ahead with the large scale planning study. Cost intensive thousands of dollars perhaps, but maybe worthwhile in the long term. Or you come back to the Climas architectural study worth seventy thousand dollars or costing seventy thousand and get that accomplished. I guess I'm looking for a response from John or Perry or somebody to tell me, well, you know, that makes sense or it doesn't make sense.
I could ask a question, but we, and then too much. Initial thought blush was, yeah, like the centralized, you know, lose cost. Get everything in one at the end. But that's a long ago, Elizabeth showing an eye around the whole colony, looking at places. And one thing I remember you saying was how equipment, you know, mowing equipment and different things, how how much time is wasted moving it from area to area. So would a centralized location help or hinder that aspect? In other words, if you've got advantages now being in multiple places so that you can work locally. What does the staff feel about a centralized location being a pleasure of mine?
I think that's a great, there's pros and cons likely of every scenario. And I think that would have to be weighed. And I think because of our physical constraints and looking at opportunities, we haven't really been able to say, what's the canvas to say? So I, it's, it's, it's wonderful to look at the opportunity, but I think still in our head, we're trying to figure out too. We've been functioning the best we can with what we have and and kind of patching, but we are looking at future investments to exist in structures. And we didn't take a district wide to look at um, all of the buildings and one of those repairs and replacements on roofs and other things of the whole district wide. We focus because we have an issue down there, even we have to get that football building down, right? We are committed. It's a risk hazard. It's got to come down. So we're going to have to solve even on the short term, whether it's a new wall or a temporarily Band-Aid until we have time to plan. Right? And so I think we looked at the opportunity to say, before we put more money bad into bad, you know, is there something else, but it's not large enough to really if we were going to accommodate, whether it be a regional consolidation with shops regionally or to, Trustee Dom's a larger district wide. John, you might be able to speak, and you have your hand raised, of some of the other models like Lake County that did an operations public safety building. Um, and maybe some of the things that what they went through, I don't, and again, I'm calling you out, but company, we can get some of that research of what they expended to put together such a building, such as that.
Yeah, I had a, thank you. I had an opportunity to speak with their um, chief operating officer. I think that's uh, what Mike Tully's title is. And he shared with me that they they went through this process, the same process we're face, that we're discussing here. Um, meaning the larger process of of, you know, a county, a countywide. They went through the process about twelve to fifteen years ago. They hired a architecture firm, I believe it was Williams Architecture, which we have worked with in the past uh, to come in and help them with a plan and, you know, where would it go and how would it work and what kind of functions and you know, they had to do all the spatial analysis and figure out this and that. I don't know what that cost. Um, because we didn't, we didn't get into that. I do know that the the center itself houses about thirty police officers and seventy employees. Um, and that, uh, the seventy employees are all maintenance type employees and um uh, Mike, Mike pointed out that it's really, it's like their crews and their um trades group, trade trades groups, their plumbers, their electricians, their um construction people, their um, natural resource management people, their, you know, all of those people that do the specialty things. In addition to that, and and it's a hundred thousand square feet, it was twenty-four million dollars to build, build and furnish. Um, and in addition to that main facility, they have multiple satellite shops, smaller, he said, anywhere between six and eight thousand square feet. But that's where their grounds crews are. Um, he, he identified the four quadrants of the county and said there are two or three in this area, there are two or three in this area, then there's one here and there's two here. So I think he said in all told, it was probably about eight or ten regional shops. Currently, the conservation district, I think the number is nine. We have nine shop facilities. We've only actually, I think, built one uh, for a purpose. Everything else we moved into and modified. Uh, thus the problems of being in a floodplain and not having good utilities and all of those things. Um, so those were some numbers that he shared with me. Um, uh, and and I can't remember, but but the the one thing that I I was actually initially under the impression that they consolidated everything into one and then went out from there like spoke to wheel, and that's not the case. They actually have one for their main center and then they have these satellite facilities as well.
Is that, is that, that's a conservation district or?
Of course. And then they have administrative offices, museums and other buildings that they also manage, cultural centers, et cetera. That they do their education. So that's just the operations as you're talking about, our teams, the two teams, the division operations of public safety and then the field staff, the the ecologists that are out in the field, so their their office.
They're split.
They're split because because their their offices are at Lost Valley, but their equipment or their things that they do are at the shops.
And and Lake County is the same way. They're just are housed at the administrative center and their field people are housed in the operations center.
Chris, is that discouraged you?
Uh, no, not at all. I just want to point out that that was just an overall thought for the future. Uh, obviously, we're not ready to do anything close to to that at all right now. Um, we have to pay attention to what needs to be done in the short term. So I think we just need to move on. Glean information from the staff, which they know what they need and what they, what, you know, what they can get by with. And I I think, uh, uh, you know, we can make some of those decisions as far as uh, the buildings that they they think that we can fix or or rebuild or something. So yeah, in the, in the short term, we're going to have to do something and get it done instead of talking about it for the next year and a half again. So, uh, you know, the consolidation, that's a long term plan and we need to really look at that down the road. So I I guess in that point, then I'll make the motion to uh uh, go ahead and put that on the uh, agenda for the meeting, I guess, uh, for the climb property uh, consultation for the seventeen thousand.
Um, let's have a vote then, if that's appropriate.
Oh, that's.
Okay.
No, so just a consensus tonight.
Okay.
This would be other board business on Tuesday night for action. Um, and so just to follow up. So as presented, the scope is to look at um, the structural integrity of the Climas building and then to do a compare analysis of what it would take and to move the Ranger one or compare it to a new shop at that location. It doesn't include any expanded, but that's a conversation, you know, so it doesn't include additional square footage to accommodate the land preservation, natural resources.
I believe though it does include a square foot.
Square foot cost, but then could be used for a follow up and, right, Amy?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, just to make sure, it's just a feasibility study. It's on the actual existing condition of the building. So it's not to move anybody yet. It's just to see if it's actually viable as a, you know, something to move into. So um, I think, yes, once we have that information, then we can decide who we want to move or not move. But we'll have the baseline information of what that building can or can't be.
Right. And so I think, and that's the best part, you have data, whether, you know, something again, long term, does that building stay or go? If it's not structurally sound, I think the board had had prior conversation is what's the cost which you're going to get of a new structure? And so you're spending dollars that could go into a new structure, but the new structure is going to cost more than seventeen thousand. But it's just the process that I think would would decision making that the board would need, staff would need to make recommendations.
We're comfortable with uh, having that analysis and then going from there to the greater issue if we just focus on Glacial Park, Region One and Ed's north side, north side of the district. Whether to consolidate those at one site perhaps in Glacial Park.
Trustee Gain, he didn't have his hand raised, but I just want to make sure that he's online to that, if there was anything to, just as I'm watching. Are you good?
Yes, I agree. I consent.
All right. Well, now we're going to quickly move on to the grants and mills and um, I think we have three or four different grants and mills and um better battle.
I think John leads off.
Well, the first one is the Advanced McHenry County Grant's middle, and I'll start, then I turn it over to to John and 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 of course Andy. And as you know, the county received the American Recovery Plan Act funds. The district does not have access to those funds. We were directed to put dollars together towards the tourism, which again, our projects didn't fit into what and we weren't successful. We had a larger ask. Uh, we've attempted to ask many of our federal legislators on funds that they had received. Um, again, it didn't kind of hit the the mark to to get funds. And so um, the Advanced McHenry County Grant, um, and Shawna from the foundation really worked. We were trying to find out what's the best way to approach this. And then, as you recall, at the last meeting, um, we got another nudge to say, you know, the district ought to put an application to the county um, before the deadline. And so the staff had regular ongoing conversations with county administrator Austin and um, their firm that is handling the ARPA funds for the Advanced McHenry County. And so a proposal was put together. Um, I guess I'm going to turn it over, John and Amy, since you pulled that package together to talk about what you submitted. It was for eight hundred thousand dollars. Yes?
Yeah, we'll lead off.
The the project is a uh, project that's on our to do list. Um, it's, I believe it's going to bid this fall. Um, and uh, it was one that we had submitted to, as Elizabeth uh, said, to another funding source uh, approximately a year ago. Uh, no, it was about six months, seven months ago. Uh, that was not successful. Uh, we took this component out of it and submitted it for the county's consideration. Um, it is uh, to do a renovation of um, a stream bank stabilization and renovation of the trail in the area of Lake in the Hills, Elgonquin area. Uh, a a tributary of the of the stream has been eroding it. Um, and our planners worked with a consultant to come up with uh, uh, both the combination of um, a stabilization of the trail as well as to enhance the habitat of it. So it's kind of a slick project. Um, it may get their attention. I hope it does. Um, and and they'll fund it.
You try for things and you don't catch a fish and you keep trying and.
Ray and Chris, are you okay with this?
Yes.
Comments?
Yep.
So then next is uh, six point three B, the twenty twenty-three OSLED grant application discussion, and this relates to site improvements at Lake Atwood, uh, hollows Conservation Area.
So John, do you want to give some update of what's being proposed here?
Sure. The the state announced, um, it was many, many months ago that they were going to uh, put a a large amount of money available for this program. Um, this program typically, I think, is in the neighborhood of about twenty million or something like that. This year, they're looking at almost tripling that. Uh, and so Elizabeth, at some point in time, said, hey, we really need to, you know, be considering an application uh, for this. Um, we have shied away from the OSLED program the last several years because it does have um some, uh, you know, it does require public access. It does. some, uh, you know, it does require public access, it does require, oh, you know, so if it's, if it's an acquisition project, it's an acquisition development project. Because you, you have to ride on the heels of that, get it open to the public and get people on it and, and, and get people either enjoying it or appreciating in some form. So we've tended to shy away from it, but this year we were like, okay, let's see if we can put something together that, one, is, uh, impactful, uh, but that also would not negatively impact the operations. Uh, and we think we may have found something, uh, I, uh, we pulled a team together, cross-divisional team. We had people from, um, land preservation, natural resources in it, we had people from the foundation in it. Uh, and then planning was in it, I sat in it, and we, and we kind of, we chewed up a lot of different things, came up with a lot of different ideas. The one that rose to the surface that seemed to, to, um, be the best was to, to look at a development at the Hollows Conservation Area. Uh, it, uh, it sorely needs some attention, uh, down there. Uh, it would be, in essence, replacing a trail that is, uh, gravel, wood chip, grass, uh, with, uh, hard surface, an asphalt, a surface. Um, and that would, uh, kind of create, for lack of a better word, I think Amy used the term of backbone. Uh, it would be the backbone on which we could build other components down the road. Um, it's a smaller, and, and small, four hundred thousand, it's not small, but it's small by their comparisons. Uh, most of those agencies are sending in million, two million dollar projects, but we're gonna stay in that smaller range. We have an active fundraising partner in the foundation. Um, so I think this would be the kind of project that might get some attention from outside funding sources. So that is what we're proposing on doing, uh, it has yet to be designed or laid out. Um, but we, we know that it's rather long, so therefore we know that it's gonna be in the neighborhood of somewhere between, I'm gonna guess, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars when we actually get it submitted.
Any questions from the trustees regarding this? Sounds reasonable to me. All right, should we go on then to, um, six three C, partnership with Open Lands, uh, Friends of Hecmatac, or a community grant? Uh, this involves Congresswoman Lauren Underwood.
This is a pretty interesting grant and a pretty interesting example of, uh, land protection partnerships and managing partnerships and work. Uh, just north of Glacial Park, adjoining our northern boundary. Uh, Open Lands purchased a two-hundred acre piece of property in two thousand eighteen, composed mostly wetland soils. It had some agriculture on it, but not primary cultural areas. Uh, a lot of difficulty getting crops all over, especially in wet years. They will eventually transfer that to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in the future, become part of the refuge. So they invested about a million and a half dollars in purchasing property, will eventually get that back when they, uh, resell it to Fish and Wildlife Service and use it to preserve more land in northeastern Illinois. Uh, the Friends of Hecmatac is a, is a nonprofit group that works to push forward the, the refuge and to help with education and management on refuge lands. So when, uh, con- congressional, uh, community grants came forward with Congresswoman Underwood at the time, probably about three months ago, Friends of Hecmatac applied for grant to do restoration work on this piece of property owned by Open Lands with their approval. Since we border it, they pulled us into the grant process and say, do you want to be part of it? So, uh, in a nutshell, how it worked, we helped to write it because we had the natural resource background. It draws on NRCS funding from the Farm Bill. So, uh, there is a component in there that allows wetland and prairie restoration, so that's the funding they're drawing on for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, our role would include technical advice on how to do it, because we've done some of that so far, uh, just something. And the work would begin if the board approves our involvement, uh, and if the money is appropriated in the next congressional cycle, which we think it will be, the work would probably begin next year in the twenty twenty, the next up, upcoming budget. Uh, where it impacts the district is we're asking for two things, one, first, allow staff to be involved in the partnership, uh, of grant opportunity. And second, uh, we have modified our natural capital improvement plan and moved some projects further down the line to take advantage of this income stream. Uh, and we would be looking for a hundred thousand dollars from, in the camp funding in order to carry that same project onto district property in areas where we haven't worked. So the wetland basin crosses both properties, it crosses the Open Lands property and into Glacial Park. And we would be able to complete our work at the same time that Open Lands and Friends of Hecmatac are doing their work on the joint property. So before we get any further into the partnership, we wanted to make sure that was something the board was comfortable with.
And the timeline, when you would think the money?
We would, yeah, we would, we would ask appropriated in the upcoming budget. So not this year, but next year.
So fiscal year twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Any questions, um, related to this?
Sounds great.
Chris and Ray, any specific questions regarding, um, this grant proposal and are committing potentially a hundred thousand dollars from the camp fund?
No, not at all. Go, go for it, sounds great.
Nothing from me either.
Well, uh, next then, it's, uh, Lake in the Hills Sanitary District, Illinois IDPA Grants the Middle Letter of Support and Intergovernmental Agreement Discussion.
Six point three B.
Oh, oh, excuse me. Well, Pat has, um, corrected my mistake. Let's go back to partnership with, uh, with Illinois Department of Natural Resources for America the Beautiful and Alden Sedge Meadow Conservation Area.
So America the Beautiful is a, is a grant program that came out as part of, uh, the money flowing out of Washington now for uh, infrastructure improvement, and there's a big chunk of it that is heading for conservation. Unfortunately, we can't apply for it as a municipal agency. Right now, it's restricted to either state agencies or to the tribes, uh, Native American tribes. However, there is a clause that allows the state to flow that money through the state and into local agencies. So we teamed up with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to come up with a region-wide project. Uh, and we were able to do that, again, because of these kind of interesting partnerships. There was a parcel of land available at our Alden Sedge Meadow site that the district has been trying to purchase for about thirty-five years. We were unable to do it, we didn't have the funding to do it. Um, the I, we, we submitted it to IDNR to purchase with natural areas acquisition funding, which comes from real estate transfer taxes. They got pretty far and were almost there, but they couldn't close the gap with the seller. So two other partners, Open Lands and Land Conservancy came in and made up the small gap. So they were able to purchase it. That puts them as a neighbor on our property, which means that when they apply for this grant, we could be a signature, or we could be part of the grant, we could use money on our property as well. So the grant, uh, is for one, our share would be for one point three million dollars. This would be for work on district property and, uh, IDNR property. And there's a list of what it, what it would involve. This one has a five-year window and would not, work really wouldn't start until sometime in twenty twenty-four uh, in the next year's budget. There is a ten percent match, but IDNR is making the matchup across the board for all the agencies that they're working with. So we would not be liable for that. Uh, it is a reimbursable grant. So we would be asking in next year's budget, and we don't have the full, we don't have the full project cost yet. Uh, but we would ask for between a hundred thousand and two hundred fifty thousand from camp, but that would be reimbursed back to camp when we were reimbursed for the grant funds. But the grant funds are reimbursable, but you can't, you don't get them ahead of time to do the project. Um, we think it's a good project at a good site. And we'd like to continue working, uh, with IDNR. The other, the other partners are the Ford Preserve District, DuPage Forest Preserve District, Payne County Forest Reserve District, uh, Lake County. So each of us has a project that is adjoining state land in those counties. And we think it's a pretty good opportunity to be able to utilize some of that money.
Again, any, uh, questions?
What question? It was for twice some camp program. Okay, I, can you tell me what that is, please?
I, I can briefly, but you're talking to a guy who can't balance his checkbook. Uh, the camp is, is our capital asset management. And you'll hear lots of that.
On August eighth, you're gonna hear lots of things.
This wasn't familiar to you, thank you. When you, um, you know, take away like some of that crop land, do you, do you, just because I, I, I don't know, I, I do you leave like all the drainage tiles there, you pull those up, or you just let them?
Sure, so it, it's really kind of, we won't, under Illinois drainage law, we have a good neighbor. We will not remove drain tiles if they will impact the joint landowner. Which is why you'll see the, the district acquisitions over the year, trying to capture entire wetland bases, uh, so we don't impact someone. Uh, in this case, we're able to do some of that wetland work because the tiles do not go off-site to affect someone. And farmland in this, in this area is fairly marginal as well. A lot of it's organic soils and, and heavy wet years is really difficult to get a crop off of.
Okay, thank you.
And as you see these projects, if they're successfully funded, I mean, is there's, do you have sufficient staff going forward to accomplish these goals?
Yeah, and that's always a great question, and the answer is, uh, we were able to hire another ecologist this year. That money is coming from, um, wetland mitigation funding, the, the district is able to get through banking. Probably, we, we have a second one that was approved last year, that probably will be hired at the beginning of the next fiscal year, when we go into that, again, funded, not out of general operations, but out of the, the, the special revenue fund. So that, that gives us some, some more ability to be able to do this.
All right, now, uh, we're all comfortable with this, we'll go on to Lake in the Hills Sanitary District.
Do you want to, or would we?
Well, uh, so Lake in the Hills, I'll start, and then we'll kind of, kind of where this goes. So, uh, Lake in the Hills has got a lot of things happening, they did share that with the board in a prior, uh, correspondence. Um, in this particular area, the sanitary district, um, as you probably had a, an issue last year, uh, with the core and some spoils, but they are flooding down in a particular area along Plum Street. And so they are working, um, they want to submit a grant to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, um, to do some work. And the district, I'll let you get into the specifics on that, but basically, they want, they're not looking for us to put any dollars into this, they're not looking, they're just looking for us to provide a letter of support for the project and then also to allow them to do some work on district property. So you can explain why we have property in it and how this all hooks together.
Lake in the Hills is a, is a really interesting site, and the sanitary district, the conservation district, the Department of Natural Resources, all own properties. Uh, and the district has, is the overall manager of the whole site. Um, there are two small lots on the extreme south end of Lake in the Hills, then, uh, that Chris, that this creek goes through, this little creek. Uh, the district purchased them in the nineties to provide some level of access to that part of the site. They, they're wet, they're problematical, but at the time, there was no other way into the site for the district to work on it. Um, so there, the project of sanitary district is to do bank reading and brush removal and beautification of the property they own. But our two lots sit sort of right in the middle of what they want to do. So, uh, we, we talked with them about the project. Uh, some of the points we made was that the district did not want to be responsible for doing a project or for that long-term, and, uh, I believe we had that worked out with them. So at this point, it's just a letter of support that would allow them to work on our property with the grant.
Any, uh, questions, comments? Generally, pretty disposed with this. Well, thanks, Ed and, um, John. Everyone are just enlightening us all these, uh, issues. So next is six point four, discussion of meeting format and agenda items. I brought this up to Elizabeth, uh, trying to think if there was anything that I had learned in the few years I've been on the board and anticipating that I might, you might have to put up with me, although maybe after tonight you'll decide otherwise. Um, and I, uh, there are some, there are some, there are a few things that, uh, seem to be time-consuming, and I was asking Elizabeth if there was a way that we could, uh, reduce the time spent. One is, often we have presentations of awards or commendations or certificates, uh, you know, to people who deserve recognition. Um, but I'm not sure it's appropriate, or I'm not sure it's the best use of our time to all come together and spend, um, several minutes or sometimes twenty minutes reading where for, whereas the district decides to do this or that and shake hands with the good person and give them a round of applause. I, if that could somehow be streamlined, and it's in our official minutes and people would still get their awards, um, but we would not, uh, spend time, uh, basically deciding these, um, statements. My small point, maybe it's important only to me. The other thing is that, uh, we go through, um, a consent agenda and the way the consent agenda is written, it seems to me it has unnecessary detail. At least to be, uh, spoken out loud and take up fifteen minutes of time. Uh, we're all supposed to lead the consent agenda, um, and if we have questions, we have an opportunity to raise those questions. And it would seem to me that there would be a way to reduce the verbiage of a consent agenda and, and sort of move ahead with more meaningful discussions, such as the issues that we have tried to address, uh, this evening, which really require concentration and, and, um, well, okay, so those, those were two points that I brought up with Elizabeth and, um, certainly they're minor points, but if anyone objects to trying to streamline, um, that part of our meetings, please, uh, let us know.
Imagine that. Great improvement to move the meetings along.
And obviously, Elizabeth, you have to run through with Andrew Payne, but a legal requirement, so we don't want to run, run afoul of any Public Meetings Act or anything, but I'm sort of trusting you and Presti to to the Secretary. Go ahead, Tom.
No, I, I do appreciate, no, I appreciate that, and Bill and I had a really good discussion, and so what you see, uh, and I just want to give you some other background, and I'm always open to change, but things sometimes there's a little bit more to it than maybe what is apparent or what is perceived by one audience to what really serves dual function. And so how best to work streamlined may create other effects or action someplace else. Um, so I think the presentations and recognition, my recommendation was, you know, a way to move that, not to do it monthly. I think celebration and acknowledging and building awareness and the excellence of the district is really important to our culture. It's important to the community, but how do we do that? Um, of course, we promote in our landscapes, we give into the permanent record, but maybe we could do it quarterly. You know, we consolidate it, we kind of work in a way that we are not doing that every meeting, and that may serve as well. The committee of the whole is supposed to be like tonight, where we do spend the time, dive into detailed conversations where then having two meetings a month, your actionable items, you really don't have a lot of new business, so those meetings move smoother. But is there an opportunity, you want to have additional discussions during the regular meeting, and by freeing that up is one. The other piece was the committee assignments, the liaisons, which is really important. That takes up a lot of time, that's at the end of the meeting. If it's been a long meeting, the reports probably get short, everybody's ready to get out the door, so the suggestion was So the suggestion was, you know, we don't list what you see in Tuesday night's agendas. I didn't go through, one, we don't know who's going to be liaison to who, to what committee anymore until we work through that. But in essence, if you don't have anything to say, it's not up there, but you have something you bring forward. We don't feel like we have to hit everything and spend time on it. So that was one. The consent agenda, we do detail it out. It is there, it allows us for transparency to the public, so they know the actual items, what we're spending. It allows that alerting bids are going out, they kind of know what we're doing. So that in essence, by having more detail, we have reduced the amount of Freedom of Information Act on items because it's there, it also helps us to sort it and organize. The actionable items, I think, that get long in reading are, for example, we would very much detail in like the agricultural acres. Those are bigger, we mean parcel location, the number of acres, you know, the cost, and that's a lot. On the published document allows anybody in the public to look at it. You've got the information, because they don't get the board summaries, they don't have all the background. So it's there for them. But we can, we can abbreviate. So when the board secretary is reading, they can summarize. They don't have to read, you know, the thirty parcels, and that would streamline time. Now, Andrew, this is a question for you. In the past, because of the law change, we were, and I've seen units of government do different things. We've interpreted and we were told by council to, that we had to read each of the items on the consent agenda. And are we doing that correctly?
Oh, so the short answer is yes, I, I think it's the best practice and a legal requirement to read out the items on the consent agenda as opposed to just packing your consent agenda and just saying, I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented, and then you vote and nobody talks about it. With that said, I, I do think there's a, there's a spectrum of information that include in the agenda item itself. In terms of no information and on the other end, just basically reciting the entire resolution. And, and you guys as a district have chosen to put a considerable amount of detail into the agenda items to help inform the public, which is your decision. From, from a legal, open meetings act standpoint, what you're required to include in the agenda is a, i- is a summary of the general subject matter of the action to be taken by the board. So, you know, reasonable minds can, can differ on what a reasonable summary is or a general summary. But it, you could certainly pare back some of the information you include to try to tighten up the agendas to make the, the reading process a little bit smoother. And Elizabeth, as, as you suggested, one way to perhaps split the baby would be to include in the, the written agenda materials, the more detailed version, but when the board secretary reads or whoever reads through the agenda at the meeting, there could be sort of a cheat sheet, if you will, that they could work off of to sort of streamline the, the recital portion of the consent agenda to move that along more quickly. So you don't have to read word for word everything that's written down in the consent agenda.
And that would be a recommendation, so that there, Andrew, that the public is getting all the we're able to search for things and we're trying to go forward and find things. It helps us from a, from at least from the executive office, when things come back up, we're able to pull things. But yet make the secretary not as cumbersome, because it is, there's a lot of these. Is that, so that?
Well, thank you. I'm sure it'll be a work in progress and
Regarding the recognition of employees, that's so important. To me, if you, if you were to do it quarterly, it does two things that are bad. One is that you want to recognize as close to the award as possible, to connect those two things. The second thing is, I think you alluded, when you put a bunch of people together, I'll get rewards. It's like the, you know, the little kids playing soccer, they all get a medal. I would prefer that it stay. My recommendation.
I appreciate that. I mean, you've experienced even with larger organizations and I have my say in.
I think you're right, you're going to have to read the, the whereas, here's what they got an award for.
Yes. All right. Well, Elizabeth, then, do you have anything in the executive director's report?
Just a, just a few things to update everybody on. The other thing that we talked about this upcoming year, and we'll go into more detail at the financial planning meeting, which the date that was agreed upon is August eighth, it's a Monday. It will be at the Lost Valley Visitor Center. So it will include our board, we invited our foundation board to be present as well. And then the executive leadership team, the directors, and then our, our leadership team to be present. During that meeting, we'll be going over the camp, the capital asset management plan, both the bricks and mortar for three years as well as our natural capital. So you'll kind of understand what those big projects are that are envisioned. We'll be laying out some general scenarios of how we'll be building or what we anticipate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. And then from that meeting, and based on concurrence of the board, then that will allow us to go back and begin building our twenty twenty-four budget. The levy process, which will be part of the discussion and understanding of that. And you may want to find a time with the two new trustees to maybe sit down in advance of that meeting with Director Dialak, just to kind of go over some general plots, to give you some history of where the district has been. And I think that might be helpful to you. And we'd be open to arranging that by Zoom or however best to facilitate that. And then from there, we'll build the budgets and then the levy will be, that discussion will be forward for action at the September meeting. The other items for this year, I'm thinking of strategy of where we're at. We need to update our strategic plan. Our current plan is on the last year, and it got a delayed start, really a slow start because of COVID hit. And so some of the things that we had envisioned to do, obviously, all didn't come on as fast because of those challenges. We had other things that stepped in, but we will need to update that. And the foundation also is looking to build their strategic plan. So I think there's some synergy, because they're there to support and advance our work, and so working together on that. The other item is looking to the future of the sustaining the dream and that financial framework. And so some of the discussion that Trustee Cook and I had was to maybe have some working groups that would consist of a couple of board members, a couple of foundation board members, and then select staff to sit on some working groups. One, maybe to focus on some finance and research relative to necessary questions of when the debt service is paid off and what that opportunity is. And another group to work on communications and messaging. And, and then maybe we have another group that's working on strategic planning, right? So these groups might be able to be working and then be able to come back and report back out during our committee of the whole, where the whole board then could be involved with kind of some of the work and that can be our joint shared task for this year on some really critical strategic initiatives. So I think that's important. The other item that is really important, and we mentioned for Stephanie, the Derva, who is our risk management pool, they have now required, because cybersecurity is such a threat, that all of our employees, we already participate in many cyber trainings and Stephanie's always testing us of certain sorts to see if we can get caught up and do something. And then it's been very valuable. But we also required to have our board, because you're on our network, you're receiving information, that you also participate in two modules. And so you'll be getting information on that that takes about twenty minutes each. You can do them online, and it's good information that you'll use here and in your personal life, so it'll be well worth your time. But that will be forthcoming, and so we look forward to your assistance and participation. The other thing I will mention, if anybody was interested in the outdoor beer trail and you hadn't purchased your tickets, we did sell out. But if the board didn't, just let me know and let's talk offline and see what we can do. Because it just is, is gone really phenomenally and again, great work. We worked through our education and marketing team promoting it, and we used to use a promoter to assist us in establishing, we've taken that all in-house, and again, they're doing a great job with that. We're also seeing, and not a surprise with all the money that's coming out of ARPA and where things are. Yes, we're seeing inflationary growth and all of that and some challenges. But we're also seeing a lot of requests coming in from local municipalities and units of government as they're moving forward projects and initiatives. And us being a county-wide organization are getting pulled into many different directions because they've got plans, they want to hook up, they want to intersect, it's going to impact lands of the district cats. So the reason why I bring that forward is we will continue to stay apprised. But it does take staff time to be able to respond, you know, to any type of interaction that we see that's going on. And we try to be very proactive, but we'll do the best we can. But again, we've got our own projects that we need to work on, but we can be very sensitive to all the other needs and demands. So I just want you to know that there's an uptick there. And then the other thing is COVID, if the county is in a high level for community, we are seeing still an uptick for our own agency and staff with team members. So we're being flexible and hoping to keep everybody safe and spread out until we get to this next week. So, but yes, we're still seeing activities out there, participation, and you know, it's just the new normal, I guess, for all.
Was it, when's the beer trail, when's the?
Wendy, what is the date? It's in September? It's on here.
September twenty-fourth.
And no, probably not. Thanks, Wendy.
Elizabeth, thank you. Are there any public comments out there?
No, there are none.
Thank you. Do I need a motion to adjourn and then go into executive session?
Just a motion to go into executive session.
Have a motion. That moves and Sean seconds.
And we need to say why we're going into executive session, so you do need to read.
All right, so we're consideration, well, we've had the motion, we're going to go into executive session pursuant to two C twenty-one, review of closed session minutes, two C two collective bargaining, and two C five lease purchase of real estate. We will convene, reconvene after the executive session. We adjourn, so perhaps not be more discussion.
You go pop up. I'm sorry, who was the second, the second?
Well, Sean.
Right, Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Eberer?
Yes.
Frasier Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
And President, uh, Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. You're welcome to come back, but we have no action out of executive session and we are back in open session, so.
So I think we'll, no one has any comments or discussion? I think we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And seconded. So Christie, please.
Trustee Eberer?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Terry Tom, she's asked, I'm sorry, Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Frasier Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Or just Cook?
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
One, nice job.
Bill, great job.
Good job, Bill.